All right, we need to take the clock.
We'll call this meeting back to order. I assume Mrs. Stuart Campbell has been able to log back on to this.
Not quite yet.
Need to give her just a moment, maybe? You're good?
I'd go ahead. She'll be in shortly.
Okay. Next on the agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance and Ms. Kinsley Smith, a fifth grade student at McCraven Elementary, will lead us in the pledge. So if we could all stand.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding job! That was one of the best pledges that we've had. There you are on the screen. We were looking at the flag. So we're gonna turn it over to you. Can you share what grade you're in? And can you introduce your parent?
Oh my gosh. I'm in fifth grade and this is my mother. Hi.
Hello there!
I'm Angela Smith, by the way.
What school do you go to and where does your mom work at?
Uh, my mom works as a preschool parent and as in McCraven and I'm in fifth grade in McCraven Elementary.
Wow, you are the best pledge speaker that I have heard all year. Excellent job. I'm gonna turn it over to our board members.
Thank you, Kinsley. So you're at McCraven. Where will you attend school next year?
I'm going to Mission Valley next year because we moved to another place.
Yeah.
I'm going to Mission Valley next year.
What do you want to do when you grow up? You know yet?
Um, yeah, I'm thinking about becoming a teacher or like a preschool teacher or kindergarten.
That'd be great, following your mom's footsteps, huh? Are there any other questions for Kinsley? I don't see any, but we'd just like to thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight and continue to have a great school year. I don't see any, but we'd just like to thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight and continue to have a great school year. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Ms. Smith, on the screen is your certificate and it says that we're giving you this certificate of appreciation for your service at the board meeting. You did an excellent job. Keep up the great work.
Wow, thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, we'll be delivering that to you tomorrow at school. Turn it back over to our board members.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. We have a motion. Dr. Boenbrake offers a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I don't see any nor hear any, so we're ready to vote.
And the vote is open. All votes are in and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Lister. The next item on the agenda is school highlights and we have Senior of the Month from Highland Park.
That's right, our Senior of the Month from Highland Park. I'm going to turn it over to our Highland Park Principal, Mr. Buckendorf, to introduce and to share. Then we'll start the video. Mr. Buckendorf.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson and Dr. Mickelson and Board of Education. Thanks for having us. Yeah, our Student of the Month, Deavion Emerson, is obviously one of our outstanding students, who is just a great leader for HPHS because she's just an outgoing and friendly person and people just gravitate to her leadership. She's involved in so many different activities from Girl Up, our female empowerment group, to Gear Up. She's involved in Scott's Movement, Key Club, Yearbook, play tennis. She's, you know, obviously involved in AP and honors classes and taken many college classes as well. When she, when she graduates and leaves us, she's going on to Spelman College in Atlanta, Georgia, and she wants to major in psychology and, and have a career in the psychology field. You know, with that, I mean, there's not a whole lot more to say than she's just a great, one of our great leaders at our school and just a great overall, all around, well-rounded student. And so I'll just turn it over to Deavion.
And Ms. Emerson, we have a video about you, so we're going to play that first. Thank you, Mr. Buckendorf, then we'll come back to you, Ms. Emerson.
My name is Deavion Emerson. I'm a 12th grader and I go to Highland Park High School.
Deavion was chosen as Senior of the Month because she represents Highland Park really well. She is being student academically and socially. A lot of clubs and activities and supports not only.
Focus on mental health. So anytime I feel like on students' mental health, I bring you.
We're having a little audio issue, but we'll, we'll continue to play, see if it comes through and if not, we'll come back to it.
I think I was one of the first teachers to really push her beyond what she thought she was capable of. I know that when we've talked, she said that it really meant a lot that I pushed her to that level of excellence.
I plan to attend Spelman University. I plan on majoring in psychology and becoming a behavioral scientist. I was going through a tough time and, you know, I, again, I advocate for mental health and I had to advocate for my mental health as to the thinking. My experience with my mental health declining and being able to, to be better, be a better person and take control of that and notify the people around me that I'm going through a tough time. It's created me into a better person because in college, you're gonna, you're gonna go through times when you don't know what's happening. And I feel like being able to identify warning signs, triggers. That would help me to be a better person and it will help me get through college more easier.
But we kind of didn't tell you the backstory of what went on.
Yeah, I figured.
Well, I wasn't enough. That's what I'm here for. So you actually are in the district.
All those things that you do, that you come home and complain about is worth it.
A hundred percent.
I did for Deavion and her. An amazing Spelman University. She didn't know if she should apply. I wasn't sure if she would get in and I knew she absolutely would get in and she did, of course. And so I'm excited for her to see this new world. I think that she has no clue what she's in for and that it's going to be phenomenal. She's going to have so much learning and so much fun and so many challenges and adventures. I just hope that she has a great time and she, she takes that opportunity to, to just enjoy life.
Ms. Emerson, again, congratulations. Now with the video, since there were few audio items, we're going to make sure it's working on our end. We'll send it to your principal right now so he can email it to you tonight. And of course, it will also be posted. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to our board to ask you questions. I do want to ask you, Ms. Emerson, have you visited Spelman? Given the pandemic and all of that, have you visited?
No, ma'am, I haven't yet.
You have not?
No.
You know, there is an anonymous donor that strongly supports both Spelman and Morehouse and actually goes there quite frequently, who would like to donate a ticket for you to be able to fly there this summer. And so after seeing your video, they were just so taken aback that that anonymous donor will provide you and one other individual a ticket to be able to go visit this summer or early fall prior to attending there. So again, congratulations. That is one of your gifts. I'm going to turn it over to our board president. You are so welcome and deserving.
Deavion, thank you. Congratulations so much for this honor to be selected as Senior of the Month, especially in the spring semester is a great honor. I loved seeing the video where Ms. Watson came and presented and lets you know that. It seems like the publisher's clearinghouse sweepstakes kind of thing. Your reaction was, was genuine and you could tell it was heartfelt. So congratulations. Do any of my colleagues have a question? Mr. Munoz?
Well, congratulations. I just had, I was curious, why, what made you choose Spelman College and what are you going to study again and what got you?
I chose Spelman because I wanted to be around a lot of empowering black women. My mom is obviously a black woman and she is somebody that I look up to and I feel like being around people, you know, and I haven't been around people, a lot of people of my color. And I feel like getting to know my background and the way that I am, it would allow me to be a better person as well. Because I know where I came from.
Well, that's so important. I'm glad, I'm sure you're going to learn a lot about yourself and we wish you all the best.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to answer your other question. I choose to major in psychology and I want to become a behavioral scientist, actually.
Is your mother there with you tonight?
Yes, she is. She's actually in the other room.
Okay, so my question to you, I think, is, is there a teacher who's been particularly, your favorite, I guess, throughout your career as an, up to this point, who's pushed you, who's challenged you, who's made you grow? You have a particular teacher who, who you could name?
Oh, I had to pick just one?
One or two or three or, you know?
Okay, well, oh gosh, it's a lot. Ms. Kelly, Ms. Johnson has pushed me a lot this year. Ms. Watson, Ms. Iko, Mr. Moriarty. Like, I just have so many supporters, like so many people. Oh, Mr. Drake. Like, everybody wants me to do good. Like, it's so genuine. I want to do good. Everybody else wants me to do good. I just feel so loved at Highland Park.
You know, we can feel your spirit through this modern technology and we want you to succeed too. So congratulations.
With those congratulations and remarks, then we'll work through Ms. Watson and so that a date can be selected as you check with Spelman to see if they're allowing people to visit in advance. And if so, Ms. Watson will assist with the date. So those tickets can be purchased for you. Again, congratulations. And I believe Highland Park High School has another gift from Highland Park and they will, I guess they've already delivered that to you. Am I correct?
She picked it up today. She can open that up right now if she would like.
Yes, I waited this whole time to open this up. Oh my goodness. Oh, it says Highland Park on it. It's so cute. Oh my goodness. Something inside of it? Oh, no. Okay. I like it. Thank you. Oh, this cup is so cute. Oh, I got another Highland Park shirt. Oh my goodness, I have so many Highland Park shirts. I just love it.
Should be fun to have with Christmas morning, wouldn't it?
Oh my goodness. We are so proud of you and it says HBCU. All right. So as you prepare to go to a historically black university along with your Highland Park shirt. You have another item in that bag? Okay.
Yes. I got a face back. It's in the bag. Yes, I love this. Thank you. Oh my goodness.
That's from your Highland Park family. Well, I tell you what, you, even though you're on a screen, you have certainly lit up this entire room and no doubt every person that is watching can feel your joy. So what a blessing to have you here. Again, congratulations and we look forward to following up on the other items that you're to be receiving.
Thank you. You guys have a good day.
You. Our next award recipient, this one was a late addition. I will tell you that this week has been an exciting week with our Kansas Teachers of the Year, but they're going to come during Teacher Appreciation Week in May and read that proclamation. But this evening, we have some individuals who will tell their story. I believe one of our students, our Topeka West student, had to work, but we do have Mr. Wagner, who is with our food service program. You often see him highlighted by the media for his service. One through Topeka Public Schools as well as through Boy Scouts and his son is with him as well. And so two students that are on the board agenda that weren't on the board agenda four days ago. Brian, Bryson Driscoll, who's not with us this evening, but Wesson Wagner, who is with us this evening, who is an Eagle Scout. We're going to turn it over to Wesson and family and Mr. and Mrs. Wagner are there. So we'll turn it over to the Wagner family to share with us why you're here this evening in this heroic activity that you've been involved in this week.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, board members, faculty and staff. We really appreciate this. You know, Wesson's kind of a, he's kind of shy, kind of stays in the back, backside, kind of does his thing, minds his own business, but he come home last week and him and Bryce Driscoll, they're friends. They grew up together. They went to school together, except one went, one goes to Topeka West and one goes to Topeka High. They worked together at Walmart. They've been working this entire pandemic stocking shelves for everybody, along with Gage, his older brother. But a gentleman had come in and was walking down their aisle and had collapsed. Apparently, I think the gentleman had a heart attack is what the, was what they had said. And Bryce had went and got the manager and Wesson stayed there with the gentleman and they stayed there until first responders got there. So I decided to put it out on Facebook and recognize two kids that are from our district that did the right thing because sometimes kids don't do the right thing. Sometimes they walk away because you're scared of what may or may not happen.
So we read it on Facebook, one, the fact that you're working throughout the entire pandemic at Walmart, but also that you were a comfort to another individual in the community. And that story was what caught the eye of Topeka Public Schools. It wasn't sent to us. We saw it just in looking at Facebook and seeing the community post. So we just want to say thank you, Wesson, and we know Bryson is not here. We know that you were an Eagle Scout, but your heroic behavior, both in serving others above self, is to be congratulated. I'll turn it over to board members if you'd like to make a comment or ask a question of Wesson and then that concludes our highlights.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Just, Wesson, you attend Topeka High School, it looks like, from your father's sweatshirt and Bryson is Topeka West. So what grade are you in and?
I am currently in, I'm on my junior year this year.
Okay. And what do you want to do once you graduate from high school?
Well, right now I plan on going to Washburn University. I haven't looked at any other colleges, but I haven't found what I want to do right now, but I'm thinking about something involving economics.
Okay. We have two retired physicians on our board who, had they been there with you in your employment, may have been able to be of some assistance, but are there any questions for Wesson? Ms. Bully?
I don't have a question, but I just want to thank you for being on the front line for so many of us this year. It's been a dangerous and it's been a pandemic. So we want to thank you very much for being out there and keeping everybody supplied, making sure we had toilet paper. We're really happy about that. And also for your actions the other day. You, you probably saved a life by getting assistance so quickly. So you just keep up that good work. It's, it's great to be a scout, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wesson.
All right, Wesson, what will be delivered to you tomorrow at your school is also a certificate of appreciation for your heroic act and quick thinking during a recent medical emergency at Walmart. So again, congratulations. Thank you. And your character speaks for itself. And it doesn't fall, the apple doesn't fall too far from the tree, as we know from Mr. and Mrs. Wagner. Again, congratulations. We do have three proclamations, board members, as we transition to our next highlight. Our next highlight, our first proclamation is going to be read by Mrs. Leopold. Ms. Leopold, who's over library services, will be reading the proclamation on National School Library Month. I'll turn it over to Ms. Leopold. And if Ms. Leopold would like to share a comment very briefly, this, this is the time to do that as well, prior to reading the proclamation.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for the proclamation. It's been a really interesting year for the Topeka Public Schools Library Media Specialists as we work remotely and non-remotely with students, keeping them full, well, keeping their devices working and providing information.
Thank you, Ms. Leopold. We're going to pull back up that proclamation and we'll turn it over to you.
Whereas April 2021 has been designated as the, the 36th Annual National School Library Month. And whereas school libraries provide materials for teachers and students that will encourage growth and knowledge. And whereas school libraries provide books to encourage children to read for pleasure. And whereas school libraries provide materials to meet individual needs, varied interests, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds and maturity levels of the students served. And whereas school libraries provide materials which reflect the ideas and benefits of religious, social, political, historical and ethnic groups and their contributions to the American and world heritage and culture. And whereas school libraries are a fun place for students to go and all students deserve a well-managed library to provide for free expression and access to ideas. And school librarians are responsible for those spaces and have their day of recognition on April 4th, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved that the Topeka Public Schools Unified School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, does proclaim April 2021 as National School Library Month and April 4th, 2021 as National School Librarian Day.
Thank you, Mrs. Leopold. And Ms. Wallace, I asked if she wanted to make comments because she oversees the library services and she said no, but I will tell you this, that Ms. Wallace, Ms. Leopold and many others have been diligently working behind the scenes, making sure librarians have been teaching remotely, giving devices and helping in any possible way that they can assist. Ms. Leopold or Ms. Wallace, any other final comment regarding our school media specialists before we move on to our next proclamation? Not seeing an additional comment, Ms. Leopold, to you and your team. Thank you for your service. We so appreciate you. Our next proclamation is autism awareness. And Ms. Wallace and I will, and, and many of the special ed team, they have our autism shirts on. And so I have mine next to me so I could be wearing the Highland Park jacket today. But Mrs. Rooks will be reading our. But Mrs. Rooks will be reading our Autism Awareness proclamation and share a little bit of information. Also know that, I'm sorry, Mr. Rooks, also know that Mrs. Dr. Harrington is also on with us, who may want to make a few comments about the district overall as it relates to autism awareness. We'll turn it over to you, Mr. Rooks.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Anderson and Board of Education. I do, yeah, I just want to make one quick comment about the T-shirts. So this year it is Autism Acceptance Month instead of Autism Awareness. We've moved to that. And, and so this year the Autism District Team decided to have a student use their artwork to create this T-shirt. So this is created by Aisha Reyes, who was a graduate of Highland Park High School last year. She's an amazing artist. And so we decided we're going to use her work to facilitate conversations about autism and, and give her a chance to show off her work. So I just wanted to make that comment about the shirt.
I thank you, Mr. Rooks. We're going to pull up the proclamation and we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Whereas the Centers for Disease Control estimates that one in every 54 children in the United States are among the more than 2 million Americans living with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas autism is a reality that affects millions of families every day. And while our nation has made progress in supporting those with ASD, we're only beginning to understand the factors behind the challenges they face. And whereas each person should have the opportunity to gain quality education and follow their talents wherever they lead. And now therefore, the Topeka Public Schools Board of Education does hereby proclaim April 2021 as Autism Acceptance Month. I encourage all citizens to learn what more they can do to support individuals on the autism spectrum and their families. Now therefore be it resolved, Topeka Public Schools does proclaim April 2021 as Autism Acceptance Month. And urge all members of our community to support efforts that increase access to those children and family affected by ASD with a high quality education.
Thank you, Mr. Rooks. And Mr. Rooks, are there any other comments that you'd like to make regarding the work that you do, our Autism Acceptance Month, before we move on to our next proclamation?
I don't think so. We just love our students with autism.
Thank you so much. And we appreciate you for your service and all others that are supporting our students. The next proclamation is for a Paraprofessional Appreciation Day. And this is going to be shared between two people. Ms. Angela Smith will be reading a portion of this. And also Mrs. Friedstrom. Ms. Friedstrom, as you may remember, was the Para Professional for the State of Kansas of the Year just a few years ago. And we'll turn it over to both of them to share where they work at and then to begin with the proclamation.
Well, I'm Julie Friedstrom. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Julie Friedstrom and I am very proud to be a part of the Randolph Elementary Staff and being a paraprofessional there.
Thank you, Ms. Friedstrom. And Ms. Smith, I believe we just met your daughter a little bit earlier.
Yep. This is my fourth year at McKecon. I was a preschool para. Before that, I was actually a school nurse for two years. But yeah, and I'm at McKecon. I don't know if I said that yet or not.
Thank you both for being with us. We're going to pull up the proclamation. I think Ms. Smith, you're reading the first, first sentence or two, and then we're turning it over to Ms. Friedstrom.
Whereas Topeka Public Schools is home to more than 500 paraprofessionals who provide services in multiple settings with the schools, including support for instruction, student activities, and for individual students, as numerous other tasks that contribute to educational success. And whereas the support and services provided by paraprofessionals are integral to student achievement, resulting in a better, more effective learning environment. And whereas Topeka Public Schools is committed to excellence in education and recognizes the important role that paraprofessionals play in ensuring educational success. Is that where you wanted me to stop?
No.
Yes, ma'am. And Ms. Friedstrom?
Now.
I didn't want to jump. I don't want to read too much, so.
No, it's okay. Now therefore be it resolved, the Topeka Public Schools Unified School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, does proclaim April 7, 2021 as Paraprofessional Appreciation Day. An appreciation of the dedication, hard work of our paraprofessionals who work to create an educational environment that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. And to be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation will be included in the minutes of the Board of Education meeting, April 1, 2021. And witness whereof, we, the staff at Topeka Public Schools Number 501, do hereby affix the signature of our superintendent and the official seal of the Board of Education this first of April 2021.
Thank you so much, Ms. Friedstrom. She's also the para representative on the superintendent's para advisory board. Any comments, Ms. Friedstrom, that you'd like to make as we prepare to conclude our highlights? Or any board members would like to ask of our paras? Our next largest group of staff members supporting students. Ms. Friedstrom, any final comment?
Well, I, I feel very lucky that I get to be a paraprofessional in the Unified School District of 501. I've been doing it for many years. And I find true success working with our special needs students. It has been an honor and I really enjoy that I get to be a part of our Topeka Public Schools family.
Thank you so much, Ms. Friedstrom. Ms. Smith, any final comment as we conclude highlights?
No, not that I can think of.
Well, I think your daughter said it all when she did the Pledge of Allegiance. So thank you both for your service to students. And, and again, Happy Paraprofessional Day. That concludes our highlights.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next on the agenda are public communications. I understand we don't have any. And next would be disposition of business by consent.
Mr. President, I move the board to approve the items business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. We have a motion. We have a second. Dr. Bonebrick offers a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
The vote is open.
Thank you.
All votes are in and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Lister. Next is superintendent's report.
On the consent agenda, I'd like to start off with that very first update that you just approved, the new principal of Topeka West, who is with us this evening. We're going to pull him up on the screen. Normally, they would be in the audience and we would tell them to stand and wave. And I'll turn it over to him to share a little bit. Mr. Artie De Dash. I will just turn it over to you to just say a comment or two if you'd like, sir. And again, welcome to Topeka Public Schools. The Topeka West family is excited to have you join their team.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Really excited to be a part of the family. I've seen nothing but great things so far. And it's been a wonderful welcoming staff. And, and I'm really excited to be a part of the family and, you know, be with our staff for a long time and help carry out the vision and mission of our district.
Mr. De Dash, you're starting off well with what looks like a couple that you have on.
Yes, yes.
Properly.
Yeah. As a Jayhawk, it was fine for, hard for me to find this.
But then he's just been approved. Reverend Williams and I might need to recount that last.
So before I continue on, if there's a comment or anything from any board members, this is the time that I'll stop before we proceed on with the rest of the superintendent's reports for this evening.
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations and welcome to the family, although I was thinking about reconsidering my vote. I bleed purple.
You know, I'd much rather keep it in Kansas, other than the other state. So, but, so I, so I appreciate that. And I'm really excited to be a part of the Topeka West family as well.
Now, Dr. De Dash, you're walking a fine line. I believe you're a Billiken, a St. Louis University graduate.
That is true. That is true.
They're bored, so.
And as you know, I'm a Billiken too. Exactly. This is not going the way I intended.
You know, when you mix red and blue, you get purple.
I don't know if you heard that. Mix red and blue, you get purple. So can you tell us a little bit about your history?
Well, on a personal side, I was born and raised in Lawrence. And we moved a lot as a child. And I come from an Iranian or Turkish family. And I've lived overseas. And because of that, lucky enough to speak a few languages. We, when we moved back to the United States, moved to Wichita and graduated from Wichita Northwest. And went to college at KU. My parents are both KU grads. And so upon graduation, moved to the Kansas City area and have a four and a half year old. And as far as education, as I mentioned, KU grad, I'm also in physics. And went to Baker, been to Pitt State, went to UMKC, went to, and just this last May, finished my doctorate at SLU. And currently the high school principal at Swatomi High School, about south of Kansas City area. And it's been a wonderful, fantastic place. And prior to that, I was on the Missouri side where I was the middle school principal and high school assistant principal on two separate assignments at Holden, Missouri, at Holden School District. And prior to that, I taught math and physics for quite some time. Blue Valley and, and as well as KCK School District. So it's a little brief history about myself. And I look forward to meeting each and every one of you to introduce myself in person.
I will say for the board that Dr. De Dash was not only unanimously selected, but the students and parents were just thrilled in meeting him at the interview process. Additionally, as we were doing our background checks, he is a published author on papers related to physics throughout his career. And we are thrilled to have him on board. And perhaps the most noted item is that his closest friend is the child of Dr. Gordon. So, and he started off with that in his interview, his final interview. But knowing that he has a number of colleagues right here in Topeka Public Schools caused him to select and apply only for Topeka Public Schools. So we are excited to have him as part of the family.
Of course.
Again, congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
With that, we're moving on to the rest of our updates. Of course, today was the first full day of the first full week of school. Before we move to Mrs. Crowe and her legislative update, we'd like to invite a principal or two to answer any questions board members may have. The middle and high school day went very well. And I will ask, Ms. Morrissey is the largest high school, to give any update she'd like to give regarding how the day went. Following that, Mrs. Hoffman and Hair are on the line. And either of them can also give a very brief update. Ms. Morrissey?
Absolutely. Good evening, Dr. Mickelson, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. It is a pleasure to be here. Before I start, welcome, Dr. De Dash. It's great to have you on board and one of my peers here in the district. So we're glad to have you. It was a really fun day. Kids came. It was a little busier at the doors in the morning. And we certainly had a lot more temperatures to take and lots of hand sanitizer used. We had to replace the bottle today. But beyond that, kids went to class. They wore their masks. The spacing was good in classes. We, I mean, if we had an issue today, it's that we got to reroute them a little bit of lunch to get them through the line quicker. And if that's the worst thing I have to do, second lunch was smooth. I think it was just very successful. But both staff and students enjoyed being here. They were still awake at the end of the day when they left, not so awake when they got here this morning, some of them. But it was a joy to feel normal. We had freshmen this morning in our assembly and talked to them a little bit about the things they haven't got to experience yet. I'm tickled that we're not going to have 800 freshmen next year, that they'll have some routines in place. But it was just a great day. I really enjoyed it.
Thank you, Ms. Morrissey. And Ms. Hoffman, would you like to give a brief update? And Mr. Hair?
Hello. And again, also welcome, Dr. De Dash. French Middle School is your biggest feeder. So you and I are going to be fast buddies, I promise. It was a, one word to describe what was happening today at French Middle School. And that would be what we call French-tastic on my side of town. We had a great day. I know I was a little leery of being able to maintain that three feet. But once Ms. Wagner and I got in those classrooms and had our numbers and started measuring with our meter stick, we quickly saw that it was doable. The energy level in the building was just tremendous today. And then to walk in, and again, our heroes are our teachers. They have recalculated. They have been so flexible. And we've started like the first day of school, number 20 again. And so it was just a fun day. And I'm really proud of staff and so excited to see kids in our building. It was a good day. It was definitely a great day to be a Falcon.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. And Mr. Hair, would you like to give a brief update, sir?
You bet. I concur with Ms. Hoffman quite a bit. Our kids had a fabulous day. I probably had about 50 to 60 kids that came back full onsite instead of being remote, which we were excited about since the announcement. And I've only had one kid that changed from full remote, or for, that went back to remote. So parents, one of those kids, one of those kids were super excited. I had kids emailing me, asking me to come back. And I kept emailing them like, I need your parent, just I need their confirmation. I need the call. But kids were super excited about it. Our class sizes worked out perfect. We have plenty of room with our three feet. I moved a band class to the cafeteria in the afternoon and it works out for space. So we can still follow protocols. And it happens to be a happy thing for our lunch crew because they listen to some band playing, which they never get to before, while they finish up with cleaning and my custodial crew. So they were super excited when they saw the band out there today. I think they thought it was just for them. But they get it every day now. So it was super exciting. Like I said, it went smooth. We had no issues whatsoever. And so we were just happy to be back. So we're going to finish strong and have a great rest of the year.
Mr. Robbins, if I could also add, please give transportation applause. We had, I don't think I had one parent call and complain about a bus issue. They ran smoothly. And we got kids loaded on. So I know that takes a lot of rerouting, a lot of time, a lot of effort. I know I continued to send names to Paula, asking for, to have a one more kid added on, one more kid added on. Thank you very much for making that so smoothly. And I'll be sure to send Ms. Water-Swartzman a thank you as well.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. I'll be sure to do that.
All right, with those updates, we have a couple of other items to share. So we're going to turn it over to board members to ask any questions.
Just real briefly, I know there was a concern about transportation expressed at our last meeting. And just how was that resolved? And do we have, we had to shorten the distance or extend the distance, I guess, or fewer kids were eligible to ride the bus? And so I wonder, do we have many concerns with that or?
Mr. Robbins, I'll turn it over to you. We did not have concerns. And Mr. Robbins gave the Transportation Department the directive to put students one seat to where there was capacity. Up there he is. I'll turn it over to Mr. Robbins to continue that comment.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Not that we have heard after the first day, Dr. Mickelson. I will say that we, you know, talked to Kansas Central to make sure that the buses, the routes that were running, that they could maintain, that we maximize the capacity on those buses. We have chosen to make sure that we kept the social distancing that we began the year with. And that is one student per seat, unless it's siblings, that we have more than one per seat to transport. We have tried to maximize those routes. I'm sure that there's still students that would like to have transportation, maybe that couldn't because we have maintained the mile and, or the 1.75 mile distance as far as transporting. But so far, so good. And hopefully we can maintain that.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I think that screen has a hand up on Ms. Lister Campbell. You might not be able to see it in the corner there.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. It was an exciting day. My own children going off to middle school, it felt like the first day. I almost got my camera out. Like, wait, it's not the first day. But that excitement and some nervousness, not me, my daughter. But anyway, it did, it did feel like the first day and it was very exciting. My question is, I actually have two. So I'm curious how lunch is looking with the distancing and sneeze guards. Just if one of the principals can talk about lunch and safety precautions.
Ms. Hoffman, can you talk about lunch since Ms. Stewart Campbell is a middle school parent?
Sure. We added some tables in our lunchroom and made some space on our stage for tables to host some students. And then we had some overflow for two of our lunches in our library and have a paraprofessional available that can assist us in there with some supervision. Once it gets warmer, we have a nice front patio at French Middle School. So when it gets a little bit warmer, we're going to allow some tables of kids to go outside, but even spread out even more. Kids were very cool. I can't tell you, kids were awesome. They were cooperative. Masks were on until it was time to eat and then they ate. All the sneeze guards were up. We have fewer students at a table. We, you know, go through the lunch line in a certain fashion, a table at a time, and come around to collect trash to keep movement down to a minimum. And then as soon as lunch is done, while they're waiting for others, they put their face masks back up and it went really well, very, very well. I know Dr. Hackett has just been awesome and great support to our middle school team. She's been out to the schools quite a few times just to help us prep and measure and figure things out. So thanks to her as well and her support.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Any other questions?
Mrs. Bulley?
So I was wondering how our classroom teachers are doing. Our remote has changed. They've had to shift up and pivot again for us. And thank you very much. I believe they are teaching remote and classroom. And students are eight hours a day on remote. And how did that, how did that go today? Did that go well?
Mr. Hair, can you answer that question?
You bet. For us, it went very well. We adjusted our day just a little bit at all middle schools for remote kids, just to have a little less screen time, give them breaks throughout the day. So all six middle schools, we did put back advisor base into our schedules. But our, our remote kids aren't logging in advisor based time for 20 minutes. That's just to give them a little break from the screens, some relaxation, that kind of thing. And then also within our math and reading classes, they are 84 minutes long. And so kids have the opportunity during those classes to, you know, put their computer down, put it aside, give their eyes some rest and their, you know, their, their screen time, just a little bit of rest. So that's built throughout the day for our remote learners. But for the, you know, the combination, our teacher's been doing it all along. And they've been doing a stellar job at making sure that they're engaging both. Now we have a few more kids in the classroom. Put our pairs in charge of being, you know, chat managers and trying to engage those kids. We still run small groups as needed. I mean, a teacher may run a small group on a remote while the pair is working with the kids, the other kids in the class. So they are making do, they're just working their, their tails off. And they know, they know they got about eight, nine weeks and they can run it hard for eight or nine weeks and they're going to all be ready for someone.
Would you be sure to thank them for us, I mean, deeply from our heart? This has been a difficult year and they have just been so gracious for everything that they've been putting in place for all of our students, our families and our school district. So make sure that they really understand our appreciation.
We certainly will. They pivoted many times. All the staff is, kitchen staff, everybody. Keep, they keep pivoting and they just keep their eyes, eyes for kids, you know what I mean? So they're just, as long as they're doing what's good for kids, I think that is the energy they need.
Thank you. So as our administrators thanked a lot of people, we want to thank them as well for the tremendous work and planning that they've done. Of course, Mr. Hair is the president of the Administrative Association and Mrs. Hoffman is the lead principal. And Mrs. Morrissey is many things, but has the largest school. And to have today go so smoothly was a testament to the leadership at our school building. So thank you. We have two other updates that we'd like to give before Ms. Crowe begins. We would like to ask our board members that now that we have a low level of COVID, vaccines have been in place and we are in a better space at this time, we are of course, planning our May graduation. In addition to planning our May graduation, which is Saturday, May 22nd, many area colleges or some area colleges are hosting a ceremony for the 2020 graduates who had virtual ceremonies. We would like to see if the board would like for us to also offer that for May 23rd, that's Sunday. And any parent that would like to participate and have their child just walk across the stage, because of course, they've gotten their diplomas already. They could register to do so by April 30th. And the principals would be certainly welcoming of students who would like to return that Sunday and have a very brief opportunity to be able to walk the stage, since the setup is there, to give them that opportunity for that photo, particularly for students who, that might be their only graduation, who may have gone straight into the world of work or anyone else. Would the board like for us to extend that offer? Because we certainly can do that. All right, I see consensus that all board members would like for us to proceed with that. Therefore, we will send out a registration link. And if no one registers, then we will not proceed with hosting an in-person event. And if they do register, we'll keep the board notified and have those very brief ceremonies the next day. The next update is the slideshow that Mr. Kip just wanted to make sure you're aware of regarding enrollment. As we pull up the enrollment slideshow, one of the items that you have had on your agendas regarding Avondale West. Avondale West program will continue to operate. In fact, we have a student that received a grant that will follow her to the Avondale West location. As we pull up the PowerPoint that Mr., that Dr. Kip has provided, we'd like to just share a little bit about enrollment. Prior to the pandemic, the state and the county enrollment was declining in terms of families. And Dr. Kip wants to share that with you. And he has projected out what enrollment might look like regardless of the pandemic. Dr. Kip?
Yes, thank you. Can everybody see the, the map of the US? Okay, so what I've done, you know, as Dr. Anderson mentioned, we do a projections every year. And, you know, we started noticing some trends over the past few years, even pre-COVID. And so that, that led us to look, you know, across the state, across the US. This, this particular graphic kind of struck me. I know that's a few years back, but Kansas still holds one of the top 10 places people are exiting. You know, and there's many theories on why that we're not going to get into tonight. But certainly, I thought this graphic was pretty interesting in terms of, you know, the, the exodus out of Kansas. And I believe that that's contributing to some of our enrollment declines throughout the state. This is a graph that was put together by KASB, the Kansas Association of School Boards. And they are projecting over the next four years, a decline of nearly, well, about 24,000 students. That's 5% of the entire state of Kansas kiddos leaving Kansas. And so that kind of led me to dive a little deeper, maybe into some of our neighbors and cohorts that, you know, are they experiencing a decline? So over the past three years, as you can see, we've, we've lost over 600 kids. But if you look at a district like Wichita, I mean, they're losing almost 1,000 kids a year. KCK is down, Auburn Washburn's down, Seaman. Interestingly, Shawnee Heights has increased. And partly in due to their virtual enrollments and that program that they have over there. I'm not going to go through all these, but basically we're seeing declines in Shawnee Mission, De Soto, Blue Valley, Olathe. So it's really a pretty, you know, impacting some of the largest districts in the state of Kansas. And as you can see, it's kind of a, anywhere between a 3% to 5% drop in each one of these districts. So that leads us to where, where we are today. If we look back, the graph on the left side kind of shows what I predicted versus what we actually had in terms of enrollment that year. And as you can see, it's pretty lined up. My predictions are pretty accurate. And I'm pretty proud of that fact that, that, you know, and, and it builds some more confidence into what we're looking at over the next three years. We are looking at about a 720 student drop over the next three years. And that does have a pretty significant impact. When you look at the funding, you know, we get about $4,500 per student. And if you think about the waitings of a particular student, so if that student also had a free lunch, was an English learner, maybe a special ed student, received a transportation, a bus ride, those are all additional waitings that the state reimburses us for on top of that $4,500. In addition, there's Title I implications, a bunch of funding, things like that, E-rate, and of course, staff to student ratios at each building. And that concludes kind of a brief overview.
Thank you, Dr. Kip.
You bet.
And I know there may be questions, but we'd like to kind of get through this piece and then answer questions at the conclusion of this. One of the items that he mentioned as an example, Perkins Funding, that would impact TCal, and I think they'll lose approximately between 20 and 25,000 as one example of a funding source. So while we may receive ESTER funding as a result of additional ESTER funding as a result of the pandemic, that will conclude and we will have ongoing expenses that we need to address that are currently facing us. Therefore, we have been planning, one, one way is to expand our virtual academy and we have already prepared for that. And we hope that that offsets some enrollment because that will be open to the entire state as the secondary program has already been. The second is to begin to look at how we can, through attrition, address schools and staffing. So we're going to pull up both Dr. Grimes and Real McCoy, who are joining us this evening. Ms. McCoy is at Cap City, the principal at Cap City. And Dr. Grimes is the principal at Avondale West. They've been collaborating all year on how they might be able to share services. Now, we've been talking about this since last year because Avondale West has students sometimes that have special needs. And Cap City is a school that focuses on special needs. So there was conversation prior to now and with this information, they've continued that conversation. And Dr. Hackett references that as a merger, a Cap City, Avondale West merger. But I'm going to turn it over to our leaders to share what this will look like. Since this will impact Avondale West, we looked at how can we still serve all of our students, but also make even better use of our programs and spaces. We have an empty building at Kansas that used to be a restaurant connected to Cap City. Cap City is designed for approximately almost 200 students, but has perhaps a third of that in the building, although they are using all of their space in a spread out manner. And certainly we have TCal and other services on the Hummer Kansas property. So we are looking at Avondale West closing the current building that they have and moving their program to the Kansas property where they would have far more access to special education services, the natatorium, TCal and other areas. Dr. Grimes, can you share what this impact would be regarding Avondale West? And, and what you might be doing with staffing as relate, as it's related to that? And then both Ms. McCoy and Dr. Grimes are available for questions regarding the merger of the two programs as one way to adjust, given the reduced budgeting and funding that we'll have in the future. Dr. Grimes, we'll start with you. And what will this look like for Avondale West?
All right, so as good fiscal stewards of the community, we know we have to do our part. We have really enjoyed a really large building with the, for a small program. And so I appreciate the last four years to be able to spread out and, and, and do some good things for kids. Now we need to reduce our footprint and reduce the size that we have. And so we've looked at the space. And so we're going to have to modify some things, certainly as we change from building to building. But some good things that came out as Ms. McCoy and I have been working is some additional electives. I've never been able to really offer my students very many elective offerings. And with TCal and Cap City having some other staffing that I've not been able to have or get them over there, transportation, so now they're going to be across the parking lot. So looking forward to that. Things like I haven't been able to fill my police officer role in the last two years. And so I, instead of waiting 30 minutes for a response, it, it's going to be like 30 seconds and I will get some support and some response. So those are really positives as we move over.
Ms. McCoy, do you want to add to that? And Ms., Dr. Grimes, can you share how many students you currently serve so that they know what that looks like?
Sure. Right now, well, we'll have 20 on Friday. I just lost one of my middle schoolers, just went back to Chase. He's gone through the transition program and, and he's back with, with his class. And I've got one then coming in on Friday from a residential facility who's moving back to us. So we've hovered right around 15 to 20 this year, which are a little bit lower than what we've been in the past. So we've had up to 40, 45 students at one time, but last year we've been pretty low.
Thank you. Ms. McCoy, is there a final comment you'd like to make about the collaboration at your home?
Sure. You know, we're excited to be able to collaborate with Avondale. We share a lot of the same philosophical beliefs in students. And so I think that combining those resources and supports for students, we're excited to collaborate and continue to collaborate with that.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. So that's one initial step in addressing some of the budgeting because of the building would not be utilized. Some staffing is, can transition into other opportunities. For example, I believe one of Dr. Grimes' teachers today accepted a position at the JDC, which is one of the programs that Dr. Grimes oversees. And so they're looking at ways to collaborate and allow people to transition into programs that may well still be under Dr. Grimes or otherwise, where possible. Are there questions regarding this initial step? And I would say to the board, we'll have to continue to look at steps to take to properly adjust based on enrollment and staffing, really looking at attrition and then asking, do we need to fill positions before we fill them? And then looking at size of school. So are there questions for the two of them regarding this merger?
Dr. Morrison?
Dr. Grimes, I'm just wondering if the, the footprint, if you, if you want to say the word, for those students who come in, they're, they're there for hopefully a short time and then go back to their schools. Will that, will that be a problem for the people at Cap City who are there all the time, correct? So you, you have some kids in and out, some kids are there all the time, so.
So the majority of our students, they come in, into the program. It's a six week, it's designed for a six week program, but all day. So they will be there all day unless they're in a transition phase to move back. And then we do like half days or hours at their homeschool and, and, but that's a very short transition period. Otherwise, it will be with me all day. Does that answer your question?
Well, the other part, Dr. Morrison, Kansas, which is separate from Cap City, is the other space that Mrs., that Dr. Grimes would be using as well, because it's empty at this time.
So they'll be separate.
They will have a separate space that they can utilize.
In the same building, but, but separate.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. The other, from Ms. McCoy, I know several years ago, the, when we moved into Cap City, the middle school students, they moved over to Djardeine, didn't they?
when we moved into Cap City, the, uh, middle school students, didn't, they moved over to Djarde, didn't they? Are they back over?
Yes, they were moved back. So, um, I house three schools at Capital City. I have a middle school, a high school, and then I have our adult learners as well with the Next Step Program, which are 18 to 21-year-old, um, really adults, uh, that we serve here in the district.
And can you share how many students, uh, that you, uh, serve at Cap City overall?
We are, yes ma'am. So we are sitting right now, uh, today at 82.
Yeah, it, it, for me, it's, it seems like a, a good combination. I, I, I certainly agree with it, I think.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, um, even if we didn't have the impending declining enrollment, it sounds like there are many advantages to this merger. And I also want to throw in that I had the pleasure of visiting Avondale West last week, got a tour of the program, and Dr. Grimes answered lots of questions for me. And I would, was very impressed with Avondale West. And so I look forward to seeing it continue to grow, but now at the Kansas. But what are we going to call it, this, this merger?
This is still Avondale West and Cap City is still Cap City. It's just the location itself will be at a different place. So the Cap City, Avondale West Academy, if you like to call it that, it certainly will be a campus, uh, where services can be shared.
Dr. Grimes, you, Dr. Grimes, you mentioned a couple of, of advantages. And the disadvantage, I think, is you've, you've got more than adequate space now. But what other, what other disadvantages do you foresee?
So just logistically, we're going to have to change a couple of our processes and, and, um, how we, um, conduct business. So like right now, I've got high school on the top floor and middle school on the bottom floor, and we're going to be in a lot closer proximity. So we've got to think through some of those things. Um, I don't have a good answer for you on all the things, so we just haven't got to that point yet. Uh, really, we're just kind of, um, understanding of where we're going to go. And, um, you know, to, uh, Ms. Stuart Campbell's point of, uh, that the program has really done some good things, uh, for a lot of kids. And I probably had the hardest time thinking about this transition and, uh, because I was there, you know, four years ago and building that program. But, you know, as I'm looking at, it, it's not the building, it's not Avondale West building. It's those staff that I have that are making that difference. And we're just going to make a difference in a different part of town. It's still the same kids who still have those same needs, but it's that staff that, that makes Avondale great. And so, um, you know, that's what we focus on, what we will adjust and, and, uh, we'll figure it out. And I don't even know all the challenges yet. Um, we're just, we're, we're still trying to just work through what it's going to look like.
Yep, our obvious question is what happens to the physical building of Avondale West? We've been good stewards for facilities after we vacated them because we've done that historically over the years. But, uh, Dr. Anderson, what's in, what do you have in mind for the physical facility once, uh, this happens?
Well, and Mr. Robbins may want to add to this, but the same thing that he has done for many years in Topeka, uh, both at Avondale East and in other spaces, that, that building would then be open to be leased, uh, and available to be leased, uh, as is Avondale East. Mr. Robbins, would you like to add to that statement?
That is true, Dr. Anderson. Uh, just as we have done with Avondale East and we're in the process of doing with, uh, Lundgren, uh, we will just repurpose that and lease it, uh, to, um, a group, an organization that we know will be a good steward and will house, uh, tenants that, uh, are acceptable and align themselves with, uh, what we're trying to do overall, uh, in the community.
I assume that was the case, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear. So thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Dr. Morrison, do you have another question?
Just, um, are there, i- is there going to have to be any construction at, at a Kansas Cafe?
Not that I'm aware of at this time, sir. Uh, the building itself already has office spaces, a food place, and again, Cap City and all the other spaces. I think the two leaders have, uh, worked, uh, pretty diligently in looking at what places will be best for kids.
So, Dr. Grimes, you, you, you see that that's, uh, adequate for you?
It's, it's small, but we're going to, uh, like I said, we have to adjust a few things. And I, I think that's going to work. We've kind of just walked it just once, uh, to kind of have an idea of where things might go. Uh, but it will be until I, I move staff over and we start really talking about processes and who's going where and how we're transitioning from one class to another. Um, and so, uh, to, to answer your first question is I don't think there'll be any need for construction because the, the building's in good shape. And, um, uh, we just got to figure out who's going where and when, and how's that going to look? But, uh, like Ms. McCoy's got, got a couple of spaces there too, that we're going to utilize. And so it's so close that we can expand a little bit into the, the Cap City area too.
Yeah, I, I don't want to be, uh, negative about the whole Avondale West. But, you know, now people are working more at home than, and I don't know that we'll be able to repurpose Avondale West. I hope that's the case, but something to think about if, uh, that, that would be, um, a lot of space to, um, have people come in and, and try to rent. So, um, I mean, I, I don't think that should be a problem for us closing it, but it may be difficult for us to re- repurpose that.
Well, and Dr. Morrison, and, uh, and we have one more item, and then we know Ms. Crowe is, uh, uh, waiting. Uh, we'll share with you that, uh, since Lundgren closed, uh, the same, uh, individual, the same group that, uh, was able to lease out all of Avondale East has been successful in, uh, addressing Lundgren. And we anticipate that same management group would be successful in, in, in acquiring that. So we ourselves don't have to do the legwork of that. There is an entity that manages that and ensures that individuals that are aligned with our purpose are those that, uh, have the opportunity to utilize that building. Uh, so with that, uh, we, uh, are excited about that first step. You already know about virtual school. And we'll continue to ask the board to be open to opportunities to, uh, reduce, um, the spending, uh, based on the budget that we'll have. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Bowley?
Sorry to hold this up, but, um, I am assuming we have space in all of our buildings that if we were to look at, um, taking footprints away, that we have space in our other buildings with enrollment down?
Well, at this time, I'm, it's wonderful that you asked that question because, uh, Dr. Kip is diligently reviewing enrollment. Enrollment opened today on April the first. We are sending letters to all families who were being bused to other spaces, who at one time may not have had space in their homeschools and letting them know that their homeschools may now have space. And if they would like to stay at the school in their neighborhood, they certainly may, uh, uh, do so and to contact demographics. So they are all receiving that letter on Friday, uh, which would encourage more families to remain at their homeschool and to allow those, uh, schools to be at, uh, the highest capacity that they can be at. Uh, that will then allow us to really reevaluate what schools have no or low enrollment, uh, or continue declining enrollment because of the neighborhood. Uh, but at this time, we are excited about that. We are also adding EL services at Robinson Middle School. Uh, as the enrollment has declined, we certainly have staffing that allows us to do that. And that will allow for all of our EL students who are currently being bused to French to remain at Robinson Middle School, uh, and many of our families are excited about that. So they have 26 or approximately 26 EL sixth graders coming to Robinson instead of being bused. So that's another way to save dollars.
So would there be dollars saved also in transportation in a situation like this?
Yes, as we reduce the, uh, transporting of students across the district, that would save dollars in addition to, um, filling up the schools that we have. And then the schools where there are not students attending or the enrollment is declining, through attrition, we would continue to adjust or, um, uh, re, um, uh, you know, address staff that needs to be transferred to other places where there are needs. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Robbins, is there anything that I, uh, that you needed to add to that, sir, before I move on to the next item, sir?
Oh, ma'am, there isn't. Thank you.
As we move on, uh, to our next item, our, uh, early college scholars, we will, uh, share this piece as it is another way to share spaces across the community of Topeka. We're going to pull that PowerPoint up, just three slides. Want to make sure board members, this is under discussion for you. So if you'd like to ask more questions about early college scholars, uh, the discussion is a great time for you to do that, but we do want to share some background. As we pull that PowerPoint up for you, one item that we have put in our strategic plan in 2016, 17 was to have a college and career strong focus in Topeka Public Schools. That means that we are, uh, looking at a vision of having at least 60 college credit hours that a student should be able to access while in public school. That is my goal, and that is, uh, a goal that I believe the Strategic Planning Committee and the Board really wrap their arms around. So since then, the industry credentials have increased, TCal has been built, our extra, um, college courses, uh, whether they were dual credit or, or otherwise, have also increased. So this is the next step in this process. We began conversations, uh, about a year ago, uh, when East Topeka, uh, Center opened, uh, through Washburn Tech. And I asked Dr. Barley, uh, President of Washburn University, and, uh, his staff, Dr. Malzick, if they would be open to, um, having our College Prep Academy students in a couple of years, in a year or two, uh, attend Washburn University. And the answer is yes. So this is now the program that over the course of this year, Ms. Risley, Dr. Hackett, Ms. Wallace have, uh, solidified an agreement, uh, with Washburn University that reduces tuition to the degree that it allows for students to attend college full-time in their junior and senior year. This would only be open to a select number of students. So that strategic plan, goal five, is what we're talking about. So the early college vision from 2016, 17 now leads to, uh, this particular program highlighting access to college credits. Again, it would provide high school credit attainment, expanding programs for industry credentials. And, uh, in this space, you'll see the four bullets. So a selected group of juniors and seniors will take classes full-time at Washburn University's campus. The College Prep Academy Scholars will be the targeted initial students. Uh, and the Washburn Early College Academy for Young Scholars will then, uh, continue to be open to any student that would be eligible to attend. So you don't have to be a college prep student. So, um, with that, uh, the students who complete the Washburn Early College Academy for Young Scholars will graduate with both a TPS diploma and a Washburn University Associate's Degree in Liberal Studies. Ms. Wallace will make some comments about that, uh, not only as it relates to Washburn University, but this step also makes this an option in other ways. Ms. Wallace, do you want to comment as we go to the next, uh, slide?
Yes, so part of this agreement, um, was a change to some policy that allows all students to take courses, for example, during the summer, uh, from any university and then transfer those credits in, um, to a high school-aligned credit. Um, and so they would be able to take college credit and have it count towards high school graduation, um, from, really from any university across Kansas.
So Ms. Wallace has realigned the curriculum, uh, and again, this is all pending as you continue to have a discussion. Now, so this would mean that students could leave our campus as we have our declining enrollment and could go to college early. And, and this does happen in places around the country. It just hasn't happened yet in Topeka, so we will be the first in Topeka doing this. So the students, uh, will be selected based on GPA, parents will sign a commitment letter. And, uh, as it states there, Washburn University would provide a 50% uh, discount in, uh, tuition, which is basically a scholarship, that's 50%. Uh, we will be working with, uh, private, uh, public partnerships to try to, uh, to work towards funding the remaining amount, uh, in addition to using grants to fund the remaining amount as well. So again, this will be limited based on budget availability, uh, but, uh, we are excited about this. Those of board members who've been on the board for a while know some of the challenges with it, from tuition to, uh, taking classes outside of the current university have always been challenging. So this allows us to move beyond that. Uh, I believe is that, is that the final slide? Ms. Risley has been really the, uh, boots on the ground for me in, uh, having the ongoing dialogue on behalf, partially for College Prep Academy, so since they are the initial targeted population. During the application process, uh, do know that Washburn University and Topeka Public Schools will be picking jointly the students. We will initially nominate, uh, and screen students that qualify. And then, uh, our college advocate, which we placed this year at TCal, will follow the students through college. So it's not just about high school, but these students, those two years, they will follow and support those students who graduated from TPS. That really, uh, concludes this, uh, program. And I believe Ms. Risley is on, as is, uh, Ms. Wallace and Hackett in the room. If you have questions when you get to your discussion period. We believe this will also help us with managing declining enrollment by expanding, still expanding resources, uh, thoughtfully. There are no questions regarding that at this time. We're going to turn this over to, uh, our legis, our lobbyist, uh, Ms. Jennifer Crowe, to share legislative updates, uh, starting with that Back to School Act now that we are back to school. Ms. Crowe?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. First, I'll give kind of an overview of where we are in the legislative session. The legislature meets from January to May and then has interim meetings, uh, for the rest of the year. So we have come up upon the last week of the regular session. The House and the Senate did not meet today. They won't meet tomorrow or Monday, but they come back Tuesday through Friday of next week, April 6th through 9th. And then on April 9th, that's the end of the regular session. They'll then take a spring break until May 3rd, at which time they come back for a veto session. And that's when they'll come and reconcile the different versions of the House and Senate budgets. So the House has their version of the budget and their expenditures. The Senate has their version that they've worked from with the governor's proposed budget. And their conference committees will start meeting. That would be the leadership of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, the leadership of the House Appropriations Committee, which is the chair, the vice chair, and the ranking minority. So it's a group of six, three on each side that meet to hammer out the differences in the budget. Also, uh, at the same time, there will be conference committees on, uh, issue-specific committees such as education. So leadership from the House Education Committee and the Senate Education Committee will sit down and hammer out the differences that they have on different education items. And what they arrive at is one bill. Oftentimes, it's one quote-unquote mega bill that has a whole bunch of stuff in it. And I'll talk to you about one that, um, is already on deck, uh, on the House side that has a whole bunch of policy and budget items in it. So at this point next week, they, committees will not meet. Conference committees will meet, and then they will do work on the floor, working bills that have passed the Senate or have passed the House, um, on either side of the aisle. Uh, so as far as the House, um, this is the mega bill. It's a substitute for House Bill 2119. And this is kind of a, a trick that they play, uh, the past two to three years, where they have put the education budget outside of the regular state-based budget and then included a number of policy items that are kind of a wish list, uh, that the leadership of the committees and in the respective chamber has, uh, that they would like to see passed. And so substitute for House Bill 2119 has the budget for education for FY '21, '22, and '23. And then the real big thing in this is the Student Empowerment Act. That does not go into effect until, until July 1 of 2022. But this is, uh, for students that are, um, below grade level performance in math or English Language Arts, high rate of absenteeism, or any other reason specified by the school district would be eligible for these accounts called Student Empowerment Accounts that, uh, would be funded through a fund that would be established at the treasurer's office. And that fund would be funded by, uh, whether it's the full base state aid, uh, for that student if they decide to go somewhere else full-time, or it would be half of their base state aid that would be funded. that would be funded and they could still be enrolled in the resident school. That money in that account could then be used to purchase a number of uh allowable expenditures, such as private school tuition. Um, it would allow for uh things like, like tutoring, um supplies. There's a list of things that are uh outlined in the bill that you could spend your monies in your fund on. Um, and that pretty, I guess that's kind of the peanut of that act. Um, this, this is, this kind of piggybacks the Tax Credit for Low-Income Students Scholarship Program, which has a ten million dollar limit on it. And uh that's a tax credit that uh corporations can put into a side account that can be used for scholarships. This actually takes the base dated per pupil or half of the base dated per pupil, depending on if they go full-time or part-time, and puts it into account that would be used for um outside of public school expenditures. There's a lot of debate on whether this is vouchers. Um, the proponents of the bill contend that it is certainly not. Uh, there's also some other um components of the bill uh requiring in-person instruction, limits to two-hundred-and-forty remote learning hours in a school year. Uh, needs assessment would be performed to ensure academic improvement. Uh, there's a different calculation that's like virtual school for remote learning. Another kind of trick that they play is reauthorizing the twenty mil uh levy. That often is a volleyball used in uh these negotiations because we have to have that. So um on the Senate side, there's a bill that is sitting alone with that uh with reauthorizing the levy. And on the House side, they have put that in the mega bill for twenty-one nineteen. So that's kind of another one of those carrots to try to get some of these other things passed. And then it also continues to expand the Tax Credit for Low-Income Students Scholarship Program. Um, this bill was put together um with all the budget and all the other stuff on top of it. So we testified against the Student Empowerment Act and against the Tax Credit for Low-Income Students Scholarship Program, but there was not an opportunity to weigh in on the bill as it stands now. And that has passed the House in a vote of sixty-five to fifty-eight. And I also should mention um that one thing that is completely finished is Senate Bill sixty-three, and Dr. Anderson, you just mentioned that. I'm sorry I glossed over it. That bill has been enrolled and presented to the Governor. That's the bill that has to do with the full-time in-person option. It was changed to uh just for the school year twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. It had gone on to perpetuity, but they have uh changed that, and the Governor said that that will be signed. So that, that really won't have an impact on the district now that we have in other words, nearing the end of the year and we're back in full-time in person. Senate school funding, uh things look a little bit different over there. The Senate budget is Senate Bill two-sixty-seven. That has passed the Senate twenty-four to thirteen. That has the entire budget for the state for FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three, including education. What they did there was pull out the high-density-at-risk funding, pull out the state foundation aid funding, and pulled out the LOB supplemental state aid funding. And they are looking at whether they can supplant that funding with S R funds. They are going to revisit that in May. So that is the Senate position, and those, I'm not really sure how they're going to handle. I, I assume that the Budget Committee will negotiate with, the, the two Budget Committees will negotiate, but it, it is so different that we have an education bill that has the education budget in it, in it, in the House, separate from the full budget. So um I, I honestly am not sure how they're gonna re, uh reconcile that. Senate Bill one-seventy-three, this is important. This has the high density, high-density-at-risk. It removes the sunset. Uh, we were successful in getting the sunset removed. I think that's kind of a short-term uh success. I think they're going to go back to putting another two-to-three-year sunset on that. Um, that had been in the House bill, but that is something that we are still uh obviously pursuing. I truly think this is going to happen. Um, but it's another one of those things that's being used as a carrot and as a negotiating item to try to get some of these other uh pet issues passed. Other bills of interest, um House Bill twenty-thirty-nine, uh we contacted our delegation about this. This requires students to pass a naturalization test to graduate. That passed the House on Tuesday on a vote of sixty-nine to fifty-four. And then passed the Senate last night on a vote of twenty-four to fifteen. Um, that last, I have, I don't have it on there, but um Senator Cluse, new Senator Cluse voted yes. We had contacted him. Uh Senators Dietrich and O'Shea voted no on that one. And that again happened last night. That's why I don't have that on, on here. Um, let's see. And also the uh financial literacy requirements. There's a bill that has now been inserted into twenty-thirty-nine that has to do with uh requiring financial literacy for uh high schoolers. And uh that was added in by the Senate. So that's a component of twenty-thirty-nine as it stands now. And then Senate Bill fifty, I won't go through this, but this is a tax bill, the mega tax bill. I put this on here because it's something that we always track because of the impact it has on the budget. And given that uh education is over half the budget, and obviously will have an impact. Senate Bill fifty is three hundred million over three years. Governor Kelly vetoed a couple of bills that were similar to this in twenty-nineteen. There is all the things that it does. It started out at like double that, but um they have backed it off to about a hundred million uh each year over three years. So that is headed to the Governor. That um has passed, and I do not know whether she will, uh she will consider it. I don't know if she will sign it, let it come into law without her signature, or veto it. And that's what I have. That's where we stand as of now.
I'm gonna open this up to questions. Ms. Crowe?
Does anyone have questions for Ms. Crowe?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Ms. Crowe. So my first question is the Substitute HB twenty-one nineteen, the Student Empowerment Act. Um, how is it being rationalized as not being a veiled voucher program?
Hmm, because it's not a coupon. That's, that's been the explanation. It's not a coupon that you get. Um, right. It's not, that's, that's all I can say. It's been explained as not being a coupon. I guess instead it's a check, um uh, a bank account, um, but that's, that's how I've heard it explained.
Sounds like voucher. Thank you. My next question is, when you talk about our delegation, um, can you remind everybody who our delegation is?
Yeah, um, in the House, we have um John Alcala, Jesse Borjan, who is new this year, uh Jim Gartner, Annie Keether, Fred Patton, and Virgil Weigel. And then we have all three new, uh, oh, and I'm sorry, uh Ron Corbett and Ron Highland and uh I'm forgetting Corbett's first name, Jim Corbett.
Yeah.
And then uh on the Senate side, we have an entirely new delegation, Brenda Dietrich, who served in the House and is now in the Senate, Christian, Kristin O'Shea, who is new, and uh Rick Cluse, who is also new. So our Senate is in, is a whole new delegation.
Thank you.
Ms. Crowe, do you have any, uh, remind me what it takes if the Governor decides to veto some of these bills to override that veto. What is the law there?
It, it would be forty-two that uh they would have to get to eighty-four to override her. Um, or they would have to get to forty-two to sustain. Um, typically, this is a party line kind of thing. There are thirty-nine Democrats, so they would have to get three Republicans to sustain a veto. It's, I, I would be surprised if any Democrats would not vote to sustain a veto. So it's a pretty strong thirty-nine.
Yeah. And how strong is the other side?
Um, it depends on the issue. Um. And the votes on a lot of these have been, now it was overwhelming on Senate Bill fifty. Um, but uh they only got to eighty-one and need eighty-four on the House side. So it's, it's possible on on that bill. Uh, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen in the House.
Dr. Morrison?
Yeah, I, the two tests that uh came up, I wonder how much collaboration with the Kansas State Department of Education, like the naturalization test, the desire for financial literacy. Did they, did they ask teachers if those tests are necessary or that are already included in our educational system?
Um, we supplied information on um, on how that is covered by US government. Um, uh, that's, that's pretty mu, I would say local control was the main uh argument that um and, and the State Board of Education being an elected body that determines curriculum. So that, that was definitely um a, a major component of the discussion. Um, that was the education people saying that, and then uh other people saying, why can't we do a naturalization test? So it's, it's kind of an ideological kind of difference. Same thing with financial literacy. It continues to be another one of those issues where um educators say this is something that should be dictated by local boards and by the State Board, and the legislature thinks they should be setting curriculum.
Are there other questions for Ms. Crowe? I don't see any. So um we thank you for this report, and uh please let us know um if there's things that we need to do to support our cause and support our students, then um make calls or write letters, and please keep us apprised and so that we can do that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
As Ms. Crowe uh moves off the screen, Ms. Wallace uh just uh sent a little message of reminder that, you know, finance, personal finance, of course, is already required to graduate. So uh, you know, we've certainly continued to watch this and uh will continue to send letters uh of concern. Uh, those are the items that we have, and Ms. Wallace, when you get to the discussion, really is responsible for realigning uh curriculum matters to allow for the college vision to occur. So we're prepared to answer questions. And Ms. Wallace, when they get to that discussion, if there are some overall items that were missed that you'd like to mention, please do.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next on the agenda are two action items. One is the schedule for board meetings going forward. Um, the, the, as I recall, the dates in question are spring break. There are three options, as you will recall from our last meeting. Option one, which is uh continuing uh March third of twenty-twenty-two and March seventeenth, so the first and the third Thursday, but note that the second meeting would be during spring break, as it's now scheduled. Option number two is delay the, or push both of those meetings back a week. So instead of the first and the third Thursday, it would be the second and the fourth Thursday. And option three is have a meeting on the first Thursday and then um skip the third uh Thursday and move to the fourth Thursday. Um, does anyone have any? Well, we just need to decide. So if you, so when I looked at it, you'll notice that the, the last meeting in February is the seventeenth. And so you have a little bit of time before the next meeting. Um, and then the, the, in April, the following is the seventh, and so it's not the very first day of the month, or, or, you know, it's actually the latest you could have it. So to me, option three made the most sense, but that was just how I looked at it. Mr. Munoz?
To me, option two makes the most sense. Obviously, during spring break, that's, I'd lean against that. Option three, you have uh the first Thursday and the, the fourth, and two weeks in between, I, you know, so much goes on in our schools. I, I like to have some sort of regularity, and so option two offers us two-week regular timing between as opposed to those two full weeks. I just want, I like to keep regular contact with what's going on, and so that, that's offered by option number two. I, I don't like that way.
Dr. Mickelson, the Board clerk was uh wanting to make a small comment.
Yes.
That is an option we utilized previously, option two.
Option two is what we've done in the past. Okay.
I also prefer option two. Option three is okay. Option one, no, but option two is my preferred.
Any other? Yeah, so entertain a motion to uh move forward with one of these options, I suppose, so.
Mr. President, I move the board approve option number two as the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Board of Education meeting schedule.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz offers a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Munoz offered a second. I think we're ready to vote. So the motion is to accept option number two, which will be the second and the fourth Thursday, March of twenty-twenty-two.
Vote is open. Mrs. Stuart Campbell, do we need to vote by hand?
Yeah, my board dogs disappeared. Um, but yeah, so you could see my little, I'll just do it on the screen.
Yay.
Yeah, yay.
I will mark it. Thank you. All votes are in, and it's unanimous.
Thank you, Mrs. Lister. Next on the action item is a notice of public hearing for the closure of Avondale West. So we heard about this earlier. So in order to close the school, we have to publish, as I understand it, a notice of intent to do that in the local paper. And so this would authorize um us to be able to do that. Is there, entertain a motion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I move the board approve the publishing of the Notice of Public Hearing for the closure of Avondale West.
Thank you, everyone. Do we have a second on the motion? Dr. Blumberg offers a second. Is there any discussion? What we've already heard? I don't see any, so we're ready to vote.
And the vote is open.
Just to be clear, this will, this will just allow us to publish an intent in the paper. And then there'll be a hearing. And we'll still be able to do that according to the timeline, if that's what we'd like to do.
And the community is involved in that if they choose to be?
Yes, ma'am.
All votes are in, and the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mrs. Lister. Next on the agenda are discussion items. So twenty-one point one, high school course change recommendations due to Washburn University College Academy for Young Scholars.
Dr. Mickelson, if I may, Ms. Wallace may want to make a sentence, uh state a sentence or two regarding the high school course change recommendation, so you understand that impact in terms of her realigning the curriculum to allow for our students to go to college early. Ms. Wallace?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes. So um we worked with Washburn University to come up with what would be a first year and a second year curriculum for them, which would allow them to have some elective choice. And so we were able to match um almost one-for-one their courses to our courses, except there were three or four courses that we would need to add into our program of studies. We would not actually be offering these classes in any of our TPS schools right now, but they would be on our books so that we can give our high school credit for them. Um, those would be cultural anthropology, honors sociology. Uh, and I would share that we do have sociology. What we don't have is an honors sociology, and that would allow a weighted credit, and they are taking it at the university, which makes it um a more difficult class. Um, and then transition to college um is a required course at Washburn University to ensure that our students are successful. And then uh
And then integrated computer applications, we offer integrated computer applications right now, but we offer it at eighth grade for high school credit. And so when we compared the syllabus, this really is a significantly more advanced ICA class. Hence, the college put in front of it for college credit. And then there is one-fifth social science course request to be added, not for the Washburn University program, but for our high schools, which would be Asian American Studies. We did an audit of our social studies courses and felt like we had we offer so many courses that don't ever get the numbers of students enrolled, so we looked at how we might be able to put those on a rotation. And so the courses that we're looking at putting on a rotation are those courses that would be cultural or ethnic study-type courses. So this would balance that two-year rotation out and provide a course around a population of students that we do not currently offer any studies around.
All right, Mrs. Bulley.
I know that when we change colleges, sometimes our credits don't transfer. Was that any part of the conversation, so that all the credits that they receive will transfer to most universities anyway?
So, yes, the Kansas Board of Regents has established a list of courses that are universally accepted across all Kansas universities for the same credit, and so we selected courses off of that list.
I'm sorry, maybe I missed it. Why are we adding this on to the list?
The four the four classes, so currently, these are all classes that are offered at Washburn University. The ICA class and the transition to college classes are required, so we needed a comparable class on our program of studies to put on our transcripts for high school credit. And then the other two are courses that were selected as elective options for our students that we don't currently offer in Topeka Public Schools, and this would then allow us to have a comparable class to put on our transcript for the students who participate in this program. So these courses would only apply to students who are participating in the Washburn University Early Academy for Young Scholars.
So, Mr. Munoz, for them to get those sixty college credit hours while still in high school, for the students that elect to attend college early, which would mean their junior year in high school, they would leave their high school and they would attend Washburn University as a college student, although they are junior in high school. And those students would need to have a transcript, a high school transcript, reflecting the college classes that they're taking at their college. Therefore, these classes are going to be added to our books so that they can have that experience. Again, very select number of students would be admitted because they would go through the college admissions process, but we certainly have some students who are quite mature and prepared to take that step.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Would they be at Washburn all day?
Yes.
Okay, so they would not even go to T High, T West, HP?
They could access electives if they they could access some extracurricular activities in that regard, but they would be a college student. It's literally an early college program.
But if they wanted to be on the basketball team or the volleyball team, they could still participate in those activities.
Yes.
Thank you, and follow-up question. Earlier, Ms. Wallace, in your presentation, you mentioned the TPS career advocate. And does do each of our high schools have a college and college and career advocate?
Not every school has a college and career advocate. We currently have one at Topeka High, at Highland Park, one at T-Calc, and then we have one that works at Washburn Institute of Technology, supporting our students there and helping them get enrolled and take the Accuplacer and that sort of thing. So this position would be a college and career advocate that would be housed in the MABI Library. They've offered an office space and then also a space in a library for just these students to use as a study place, so that they could come together and collaborate as a as a small group of TPS kids who are on university campus.
Thank you. So that's a new position, then, the at the career college and career advocate housed in the MABI Library is going to be a new position?
Correct. And then, yes, and a part of the program and part of our need is attendance, because we're still required to take attendance. So the students would start each day at MABI Library, and that would be their attendance for the day.
Okay, and when would this start?
In the fall of twenty twenty-one.
Coming up. All right. Thank you. It's exciting.
Mary.
I will share with you, as, you know, in twenty sixteen seventeen, we, if you may remember, we had Gomez Gomez come and talk about our curriculum needs, and and during that time, when I had had him come to the district, I asked about places that were high-performing with dual language and with Hispanic students, and so some of our dual-language staff attended and visited a a school that he recommended that had a college-for-all program, you know, the of an initiative where every student could access college, and that's the vision. And part of that is, you know, ensuring that you have a way for every student to access at least sixty college credit hours. So we've now done that. We started with Topeka West, which is how we had the Washburn Tech counselor that works now at Washburn Tech, who's a college advocate. They certainly offer a number of college classes. We've increased the staff that have master's degrees that are adjunct professors, so that we can increase those classes. But this next step of allowing students, like we have one student, she's come to the board meeting before, she's been remote all year, she's excelled. She's a student that has done very well, who is ready to go to college, and so for students who meet the admissions criteria that go through the very rigorous screening process between the university and us, it is so exciting to be able to say these students will literally leave high school with the first two years of college and an associate's degree completed at the same time, without it coming from their parents' pocketbook. They are also targeting first-generation students, and that's part of what the MOU also targets, although it is not, it is open to all of our students, but that is a target population.
So could a student? So they're for juniors and seniors, but let's say a student is a junior, doesn't want to do it, but as a senior wants to do it, so they could enter at any time. Is that accurate, or do they need to enter their fall of their junior year?
This is really intended to enter in your junior year, so that you complete with the associate's degree. That is the vision for this. Ms. Wallace, do you want to add to that?
Is that for those students who are who don't participate as a junior, we have a lot of other options for them to earn concurrent credit at their own high schools. So as Dr. Anderson said, the vision of this is that kids leave with those sixty college hours and that associate's degree.
Now, we also have students that do take classes at Washburn, just individual classes over the summer and through the fall, they can still do that, but not this early college program. We will be the only person, perhaps even in this region or in this area of Kansas, offering an early college program in which we're sending students to college in their junior year. I believe the closest one, Ms. Risley, you researched for me, who in the state offered this? Was it Kansas? Was it Wichita? Or that was the closest place, Ms. Risley?
Yes, I think it was Wichita, and they have just started their program as well about a year ago.
Thank you.
The exciting thing here is that students can attend while living at home and get college paid for and get a head start on a college. I'm just hopeful that we can support them enough. I knew I know when I was in high school a million years ago that there were kids that were academically smart enough to go, and I went to high school in Manhattan, so there were kids that went to K-State and took college classes, and and they were mature enough to do it, and I was never that student, I guess, but mature enough, I suppose, or academically gifted enough to do that, but the exciting thing here is that there's opportunities for our kids, right, and and so they can go to Washburn, get an associate's degree, continue at Washburn or to another university, and and get a head start with half of their college essentially paid for without room and board or tuition, so that's an exciting opportunity that I think our kids will have, so.
And there is a level of social-emotional screening. Both Ms. Risley and I come from districts that have had this before, both in Kansas City and St. Louis, you know, so we are very familiar with the entire setup, so it's really structured in a way that we know it will succeed, and she did her research on our behalf to look at what Kansas provides, and their the Wichita program is very similar to the ones that we are familiar with. So I think all the components we've put in, and social-emotional screening, because there's a level of maturity for the student. So we have some gifted students who we feel like aren't ready yet for that step, but we also have students that are certainly ready for that step and beyond, so we so there is some experience, both on Ms. Risley's end and on my end, of knowing how this can work well, and it's it will set Topeka apart as we continue to work to have Topeka to become a destination district. So people are running to come to Kansas as opposed to departing Kansas.
Are there any, Mrs. Bulley, do you have a question?
I just wanted to make a statement. I know when my children were going to school, that some of them left campus and went to a college campus, and that support that we have in place is going to be very important, because so many of them felt like a duck out of water with students that are so much older. And so that support, I think we have to really watch and support and keep an eye on and make sure that it's very strong to help those students.
And and I don't know, this is not the intent of the college and career advocate that will be housed at MABI Library, but I assume they would also keep the a side view eye of of our students who may not be in the program, but who may be taking a class or two at Washburn and making sure they're on their path, and maybe maybe not counting their attendance, but doing some other things in support of their educational goals.
Absolutely. That's what we have in place at Washburn Tech. Mr. Dick and I selected the Washburn Tech counselor that was already working at Washburn Tech, and she now still works there, keeps her same office, but she now works for Topeka Public Schools. We fund that position, and that's how we've increased that program and the industry credentials so much. She looks out for our students, she visits, she checks in on them. So this vision is very similar, but it's a, you know, a four-year college, a two-year degree as a result. And if they stay at Washburn, they have the first two years out of the way, and we believe will be better positioned to gain the scholarships and things they need to, you know, to continue their study, program of study there.
Dr. Boomerang?
I understand that Washburn Merle High School attracts individuals to the school because of their baccalaureate program. But I understand they have to pay tuition. So would this not be a big advantage over that baccalaureate program? Or am I completely mistaken?
This is certainly an advantage in that there's no tuition, it's literally going to college early and getting a degree from it. But, Mrs. Wallace, do you want to speak about the IB program?
Well, we've talked about it a little bit, but an IB program is a pathway or a rigorous study that can result in some college credit, but they would not leave within sixty college hours or an associate's degree. So from that perspective, this is significantly more advantageous, along with the fact that it is your first two years of college paid for, which is a huge advantage for many of our kids.
Are there any other questions on this topic? Okay, I don't see any, hear any. Next discussion item is recommended closure of Avondale West Building, so is there any more questions since we've kind of already discussed that, but it's on the discussion item. We will have a hearing in we'll post the in the paper and then have a hearing probably in a month or so.
Correct.
Okay. Last on our agenda is board member comments, and we'll start with Ms. Stuart Campbell remotely, if we can, so I don't forget you, I don't want to forget inviting you to 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 share your comments.
Thank you. So I want to say today was a very positive day for my own middle-school children, being full-time. My sixth-grade daughter was talking about how excited she was to finally meet this girl who she'd kind of felt like she knew but had only seen her online, and she just felt like she was somebody who she could be friends with, and they she came home with a new friend. Turns out they have every class together, and my daughter was like her guide showing her around Landon, because this this girl had been a remote-only student all year, so yeah, she came home really, really happy today about her new friend. So I do continue to be concerned about our middle-school and high-school teachers trying to juggle in-person and remote learners at the same time. I know it must be very challenging, and I just thank them a million times over. And the last comment I have is I I really look forward to our next school board meeting on April fifteenth, when we get to hear from Dr. Pazat, you know, who is KSDE's World Language Consultant and also the state coordinator for the seal of bilingual literacy, and that this conversation that we'll have with her can also kickstart deeper conversations about growing and improving our dual-language program at the middle school and the high school. And we just should be very proud that TPS is the only pre-K twelve dual-language program in the state. So let's just do all we can to strengthen it at the secondary level. So that's all my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Dr. Boomerang?
I continue to be impressed, as I have all year, with the progressive nature of the administration, thinking of ideas and programs to improve the education of our children. This Washburn lays on, notwithstanding, is a continuation of that process, and I again, continue to be impressed. Thank you very much.
Dr. Morrison?
I want to just thank our librarians and media specialists, our sped teachers who deal with autism, and and the paraprofessionals. We could not do what we do without each of those groups, and so in this difficult time, thank you all very much, and I'm very happy everything went fine. You know, there there may be some bumps still with the virus, but you know, I think this board has been very good about following guidelines, looking at CDC and and trying to be as safe as possible. So congratulations also to the board. And the only other snide comment I'd like to make would be that maybe the legislature should take a financial literacy course.
I want to again congratulate our Ms. Emerson over at Highland Park High School, and all of the success and hard work that she's put in to to get to where she's at. I look forward to hearing which, hopefully, she can take a trip and and check out the the campus at Atlanta. I wish her, and I know all of us wish her luck in as she takes that next step forward when she leaves Topeka Public Schools. I also want to remind and congratulate Mr. Wagner and Mr. Driscoll on offering aid to to someone in need. I think what what we want is to grow, you know, support productive citizens, like it says here on our mission, and so their their self-expect and helping somebody in need is demonstration that we're we're helping these, you know, these young students be successful citizens, as as well as, you know, the work that the parents do to support them. As Mr. Dr. Morrison said, you know, thank you to all of those who make up public schools. As Mr. Dr. Morrison said, uh, you know, thank you to all of those who make up, uh, public schools, um, are paraprofessionals, who I know who are instrumental in being able to support our teachers and the work that they do, uh, with students, as well as our social workers who work with our special ed, uh, students who need that extra attention and who will give that and, and help those students be successful. And librarians, I, I think, uh, they, everybody holds a special place in their heart when it comes to libraries and librarians and the worlds that they open, uh, for our students. So we're appreciative of that. Um, my kids started school today, um, and I, I haven't seen them. I, I left early, seven o'clock this morning, so I haven't been home yet, but I, I look forward to it. Once I leave here, uh, checking in with them and seeing how things went. I, I expect they went fine, but, uh, though I'm sure they'll have a lot to share, so I'm looking forward to, to, to that. And, um, yeah, I think that's all for me.
I just love that we have Autism Acceptance Day. I just love that because so many people have changed our world who have had autism. So to have the acceptance on there is just wonderful. That's just so exciting to me. Carmen Rains put out a grant to get uke, ukulele, no, ukuleles for her students during this COVID time, and she received the money for that to buy new ukuleles and just the way we really want to expand our music and humanities and Topeka 501. I just appreciate her taking that effort and moving forward with that. Um, always our community donations, people who have donated money to ours, any of our studies, our schools. I, we just appreciate you so much. I love that we looked at the, our American Studies to figure out who we're not addressing. I just love that. I've been asking about that. And to add that Asian American Study, I'm just, that is wonderful that we're doing that. Scott Ritter invited me to his class last week and made me read out loud to his students. I got to be a part of his, um, reading classroom, and it was just very exciting. And to see students doing exactly what they need to do, uh, having their barriers up, their masks on, and the respect that they have for their teacher, Mr. Ritter, which I'm not surprised about, but it's wonderful to see students coming into his classroom at the end of the day to share concerns, and he has such great advice for them. So I know we have a lot of Scott Ritters in our districts. I know he's excellent, but I know we have others and we just appreciate you. You know, our parents, we, our teachers, our social workers, our administration, all of those are like puzzle pieces. But it's the parents that are the glue of our buildings. You know, you think about grouting and you spread that, that in there. Our buildings could not function without our paraprofessionals. So I cannot tell you how grateful we are to have you and so many of you. That's why we work so well. And the last one is Suzel Winkelman and her memorial garden at Topeka High. Try not to cry here. You know, in our pandemic, we haven't had much time to just like stop and think about the people that we have lost. And I just love her idea of this memorial garden, to think about the people we've lost during this time when we've had to run like crazy to keep ahead of this, that we haven't like stepped back and think about the people we lost. So that's just another example of what kind of educators we have in Topeka Public Schools. Just want to thank them all.
Well, when it comes to, uh, COVID nineteen, I call it, I'll Mr. COVID. He has dealt harshly with my family as well of ranks of friends. I have lost close family members and close friends who are victims of Mr. COVID. With that said, uh, autism acceptance, is that's what it's called? That's why I got my bow tie on tonight. I have three grand nephews that are autistic. Uh, one is a current student in 501 over at Eisenhower, who I think very highly of and is doing quite well. Also, I want to echo the comments of Ms. Bulley regarding the paraprofessionals. I am a paraprofessional myself, as I know firsthand, uh, the value that they add to the, our, our education of our students. Also, uh, this coming Tuesday, uh, April the sixth, I appreciate your positive thoughts in my direction as I attempt to, uh, speak at a, um, diversity class at, uh, the College of Agriculture at K-State on the importance of diversity in education. I don't like Zoom meetings or I have to do this virtually. Um, and also today was the first day for the NSBA Annual Conference. We had, uh, NBC had their annual, uh, business meeting. And next, uh, Thursday evening, our college prep kids will be, uh, presenting of their session view of the child. And let's see, something else I wanted to say, but I can't remember what it was. Uh, oh, in the, uh, I noticed donations. There was a donation by the Washburn Student Government, Government Association to our Good Nights cupboard. There's, the Washburn University Student Pantry is one of the beneficiaries of the, uh, proceeds that came from the food drive. And McQuar- McQuarter Elementary was on, uh, the kids segment on WIBW. I think it was Tuesday. It happened just like, I was very proud of McQuarter. I still can't get over the fact that they collected during a pandemic thirty-three hundred and eighty-eight food items. So I think that's about all I have to say.
Mrs. Bulley, Mrs. Winkelman was my son's ceramics teacher at Topeka High, and we, my family has no artistic ability, musical ability, artistic, we, our brain is not that side, whatever side that is, but he loved her. And it's easy to see why, um, after she did what she did for the victims of COVID. It was interesting to see, uh, the, the imagined or the inventiveness of our middle school principals who, at our last meeting, had some hesitancy about how are we going to make this work? And the transition and transformation that happened, um, with Ms. Hoffman and, and Mr. Hare, at least we saw tonight. So I'm just appreciative of their willingness to think outside the box, the leadership that the administration has, uh, shown and, and guidance that they've given them, and that our students are doing so well there. And then I think we can keep them safe and, and still remain within CDC guidelines. And then, um, in today's Kansas City paper this morning, I was reading how a, a district in North Kansas City on Missouri Side, Park Hill, I believe, a district about the same number of students as ours was a victim of ransomware. They had to close their school for two days. They didn't, didn't pay for that, but I'm on the technology committee under, uh, Mr. Dow's leadership and understand that we are moving towards more, um, secure methods. And so our district should be prepared for that. And the consequences of not doing that are significant. Um, I think the, the quote I remember was the FBI quoted that fifty-seven percent of ransomware cases in this past, during the pandemic essentially involved school districts. So, um, we will continue to monitor that and make sure that we can keep our information as safe as possible. If that will join me. Thank you.
Dr. Mickelson, as you're preparing to adjourn, a student sent an email and asked, uh, if her, uh, teachers could be publicly acknowledged. Would you mind, sir, if I read this six-sentence email? The student is Jomara Benning, who is an eighth grader at Jardine, uh, Jardine Middle School and at College Prep. Uh, she says, "I would like to take a moment, uh, this evening to say thank you to all educators that have continued to put children first. This has been a really difficult school year. During a pandemic and civil unrest, our educators continue to prevail and show students that we are stronger than we know. They have supported kids in ways beyond education. I would like to personally thank a few teachers that have really stood out for me and I would, uh, and have been supportive. They've been a friend, been a teacher, been a role model, and they've been my heroes. Please honor these teachers this evening for going above and beyond. Ms. Foster, Mr. Esau, Ms. Risley, Mr. Hare, Mr. Hay, Ms. Rowe, Mr. Morris, Ms. Latham, Ms. Keith Line, and Mrs. Morelli." Thank you, Joe Mahara Benning, eighth grade student at Jardine and a college prep student.
What a wonderful tribute. So can't think of a better way to end this meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.